Okay, we'll go ahead and bring the city council meeting to order. I would like first ask everyone to stand and join and recite in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kevin, can you please do roll call?
Jay Barrow.
Here.
Matt Barber.
Here.
Carter Cole.
Here.
Scott Murray.
Here.
Abby Wilder.
Here.
Okay. Was everyone given a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting held on June 18th?
Make motion to accept them as emailed.
A second.
Motion a second. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Yeah, okay. We're going to...
Casual.
Let's go ahead and go to, um... There's an easement on Winchester and 13th Street that we need to make a matter of record. This is for a walking path that's gonna... Right now, it's pre-DA ramps and everything around that intersection at 13th and Winchester Street out by Walmart. So, we have an easement that we had to get from, um...
Riding balls.
Riding balls. So, this is...
Yep, just making a matter of record. We got signatures. Payment's been made. It's been recorded.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to make it a matter of record.
Second.
Motion a second. On favor?
Aye.
Oh, same sign. We do have on the agenda a possible Lake Shore's discussion. I think it probably is probably gonna get moved back another meeting. Scott has made an appointment with Brett Miller from MLS for tomorrow. So, there's a few of us there to go out there and actually see what they're talking about, where the trees are, how much... Where they're talking about moving the ditch to. And less than... More discussion. We're gonna get clarification of everything tomorrow. Tomorrow, 10 o'clock, is that right?
Yeah.
Anybody else have any other questions until we move that to the next meeting? Okay. Thanks for setting that appointment up, Scott. Okay. I know we have an issue on Manchester Street, but the representative's not here yet, so we'll hold that off. We have some discussion over ordinance enforcements. Kevin Gerber, do you wanna come up?
Hello?
Go ahead.
Yes, I would like to discuss our ordinance enforcement. I've made a planned schedule. I'll talk about... Just these out now.
Glad I brought my glass.
I, you know, I'm gonna try it as big as I can get.
Big one, yeah.
Thank you. And I think so some of the issue is there's things that are formed by statute, and there's other things that are city ordinances, right?
Yes. So, we have those... And we have a lot of city ordinances. Those would be the ones my department would be concerned with or need to enforce at any point in time. Now, when I came on the department, you were issued a metal ticket book, and these are the ticket books that we would use, and they're carbon copied, and there's five copies per ticket. So, however you would say that. And you would issue a citation that way. And then parking tickets are these little books with the yellow envelope on the back, and those are... Those only cover some of the ordinances. On that front of that sheet, there's a yellow box, and those are the ordinances that would be covered by this yellow envelope. All these other ordinances, we don't have a real good way of enforcing them. So, as an example, last week, I stopped a... On Thursday night, I stopped a gentleman on a golf cart who'd left a concert going down Monroe Street, which isn't allowed. If I chose to enforce anything on him, I would have to... Any of the officers would have to get one of these old paper ticket booklets out, handwrite everything in, hand them that citation. We'd have to deliver a citation to Ann's office, to City Hall. Someone at the department would have to enter all that information into the computer. We have a system that does all of that for all of our state statute tickets already. We refer to it as e-ticket. That's a program that's applied by the state for free to us, and so if we stop someone for speeding, and we issue a speeding citation, we use a barcode scanner. We scan their license in, their vehicle registration. It puts all that information in there for you. You pick from a list that it was speeding, and you enter the data that you need to, and print off in the card. You can insert that paper, and everything's electronically filed. Efficient. I would like to move forward with getting our ordinances put into the e-ticket system. It doesn't cost anything. It's just your license that we already have available. We can actually, you know, track if you need to, that a particular person keeps getting this same ticket over and over, what's going on, how could we help them not get that ticket? What's the issue of this? It's just a much simpler way of doing our job. This is... I remember when we got department cell phones, moved away from our pageant, and talking to Kenny about cheap gas, or about that's like using a VCR compared to a DVD player. And this, I kinda look at it the same way. This is antiquated, and it's really not working.
So, back to the golf cart. The violation was that they were on 224?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, they should've gone to Jackson Street to get to that side of town?
Yeah. Yeah, just as an example. I mean, that's just one particular example. Dogs, we're always getting dogs at the P D. People come and collect their dog. There's no consequence. We get the same dog over and over and over. If they're gonna keep collecting dogs, then...
They should pay.
There should be a revenue agreed from this mental supplement.
Right.
The cost that we incur through time and the dog food and...
Right. You're not a dog babysitting service.
We are not.
Right.
Kevin, who enters all of those ordinances into the e-ticket system?
Um, I will. I will send a... If this is okay, I can... I just send a spreadsheet down to, um... It's called JTAC. I can't remember what that acronym stands for.
Mm-hmm.
They put it in. And then when they... They just push the update out to our computers, and then it's in there.
What about the process of getting it paid then? Like, is that gonna go to Kevin afterwards, or...
The process of getting the payment?
Or like, does ordinance get paid to the city, right?
So...
Or does that get printed at the bottom of the ticket, or...
Yeah. Burn and Geneva do this, and at the bottom of the ticket, it has, uh...
Yeah.
It refers to the clerk's office, with the address and the phone number, I believe. Yeah.
So, do they have Burn and Geneva? They have their signature already?
Yeah. Um... Can I talk to him here? The, uh... We can include a pre-addressed envelope similar to this with the... You know, if someone's issued an ordinance ticket, it can be... We can create a system so it's simple for the person receiving it. I don't wanna... We don't wanna go out and write a bunch of ordinance tickets. That's not the purpose of this, but we need to be able to enforce what we already have in place.
Right. Right. And I think for the most part, just like you talked about golf carts, the biggest issue we've had with golf carts are driving on the highways, which is not allowed. I think a lot of people just forget Monroe Street, you know, 224 out there, which is a reminder to people that these... The golf carts are not allowed on the highways. For the most part, you guys have done a great job of just letting people know. But if you do have the same person over and over, then you need something with some enforcement.
Yeah.
So, it's not about... To me, this isn't about changing laws. It's about doing... It's about moving the ordinances into the same e-ticket that the statutes are covered.
Correct. It's just updating how we can enforce them.
Right.
Efficiency and modernization. Yes.
But what this... What this does require is every local ordinance that is mentioned here, it does require updating and amending that ordinance to reshape the fee schedule. So, it's not... We're not altering increasing or decreasing. We're working within the current ranges permitted within those penalty sections, but further defining them so that they can be incorporated into the e-ticket system cleanly, rather than just referencing a discretionary range for the fine.
Yeah. So... So, for example, earlier before even border work started, someone asked me about open violation. So, the way the ordinance is written, that fine for that ticket ordinance can range from zero to $2,500. Now, that's on the back. They all start with zero in the way the ordinances are written. I put $10 as a starting point rather than zero on those. So, I can't imagine getting a ticket for $2,500 'cause I had an open... I don't know where any of those fines came from. I would have to... I don't know where I had time. So, for an example, on that one, I just... I put the first fine is 50, and then it just increases the next... The second one is 50, the third one is 50, and you could just step it up 15 on some of those.
And as... And as these ordinances are added into the e-ticket system, it can track whether or not it's someone's first offense or a secondary or third offense?
Yeah, we can... We would be able to track that actually through e-ticket and our other... Our records system that we switched to last year would also... There would be two different databases that we could query to find out.
Okay.
As we do this and modernize this list, are we going to go through some of them and see if some of them don't make sense anymore?
Like bicycle speed violation?
Yeah, that's what I was just looking at.
I was gonna ask you, how fast is that?
After each ordinance.
We're test it. Yeah.
There's, uh... I'm sure there's room for improvement on many of the data.
I mean, these... Some of these are from a while back, correct?
Yeah, 'cause of the one bicycle hanging on roadway pass, but you're not allowed to ride the bicycle on sidewalks, so where are you supposed to ride the bicycle?
Yeah.
There's a lot of bicycles, but...
Bicycle carrying articles.
You're on the road.
And then like...
Yeah, but it's...
Even with bicycles, you can't ride it on the road. A lot of these are covered by even state law, you know, but there's an ordinance to tighten it further down for whatever reason, you know. The city has wanted to do that. I think there's ordinances where, like sidewalk, or, I'm sorry, skateboards, bicycles, like they're not allowed on certain sidewalks in different areas.
Right.
Which I... Kids aren't gonna know that.
Mm-hmm.
So, the first step in all of it is just moving forward to get it put into our... The e-ticket system, but the only issue with that is, I mean, once they're in there, then if that's starting to happen, the second piece of the puzzle needs to be put in place of... Of, uh... How would I word that in?
Do we have to clean up the ordinances before we put them in?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, there's going to be... Yeah. And I think... I think that there can be one ordinance that addresses the entire revamping of the fine schedule, referencing each individual code section and chapter, but it's certainly going to require an ordinance to do that and a public hearing between the introduction of the ordinance and final approval. Wow.
Well, I'd say I'd make a motion and move forward preparing ordinance to change the fee schedule, or I don't know how you wanna say that, or whatever needs to be...
That covers it? Yeah.
Try to do it with one ordinance, or not eighty. I've got a great line drawn.
Are you sure?
You know, execute that motion.
Okay, we have motion a second. Any more discussion?
Do we have to go through and... Like you're saying, we can do like this blanket for all of them, but like some of them that are kind of obsolete anymore, do we have to go in and individualize those, or no? I'll structure the ordinance that gives an overview as to what the purpose and intent of the amendments to the code sections are, and then I'll identify which code sections specifically need amended in what capacity, and then, um... All of these will be addressed within a single ordinance for council to consider and approve. Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Motion a second. On favor?
Aye.
On the same side? Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. It'll be one ordinance, but it'll mention several different code sections within... American Medical Publishing is gonna love me.
While Kevin... While Kevin was up here, I am going to mention that Officer Mark Cook will be retiring this week with 31 and a half years of service. We will have a resolution in a couple meetings when he can be here, so I think it's gonna be the first meeting in August. We'll have a resolution for Mark Cook, so... Right now, just a big thank you to him for all his years of service here, and we will have a little more in a couple weeks, or a few weeks, probably. We're gonna wish him well, though. Chris Kasten's here from Innovative Concepts. We're gonna talk about some parking issues on Manchester Street behind the new hospital building out there.
If it's helpful, I have some drawings here that I can pass out.
Please. Yep, yep.
If it's helpful.
Thank you. Thanks. Thanks. So, I'll start out just by adding that this is not my preferred method to bring this to where we are at this point. So, we... So, the concern is right now that at Innovative Concepts, our business, which is at 1421 Manchester Street, we take deliveries multiple times a week with, you know, 53-foot semi-trailers for delivery of product into our warehouse. I mean, it, you know, this week or next, there's only been one or two, but some weeks it can be a couple days. Sometimes we can go, a week can only have one or two, but it's a fairly consistent game. We've occupied this space on Manchester Street for 31 years and have really never had any issues of any kind, but we have some new neighbors, and I'm thankful for them. I guess I wanna add that. I mean, I'm glad to see, you know, a growing concern move into Dr. Bennett's old space in front of us, but it has caused a bit of conflict for us. So, back in roughly February, maybe a little before, we were having trouble with service and maintenance vehicles being parked in Manchester Street, you know, along the front of where our building is, which, okay, it's fine, but it just seems like it continued, and in some ways it would be worse, or there would be three or four vehicles there. We had started back in early February making friendly attempts to go over and talk to the drivers as they stop before they walk into the building and say, "Hey, could you guys please, you know, move your vehicle, 'cause we... It's blocking access?" We have semi-drivers now that are saying that when they pull up to make a delivery, they're gonna pass us by for another day's delivery if we have to deal with the vehicle in the street. And, you know, everyone was very pleasant and said, "Yeah, we'll do that," but it just didn't continue. So, on March 27th of this year, we, after talking with some community members, we sent an email asking officially the hospital to please, you know, we understand... I mean, I run, what, nine service teams every day with vans out on the street where we go and have to unload toolboxes and product, and... But the protocol that we follow is unload and then go park someplace where the van's out of the way. So, we've asked the hospital in an official manner, sent to Mr. Smith at Adams Health Network, kind of our explanation of what we'd like to work with them on, and to no avail, it seemed to be not... Nothing changed. So, we've continued, and we've been, I think, patient. I know Tina has been over my wife multiple times and just asked people to move. We were met with, I guess I would say, I don't know, frustration, because earlier last week, we were having... I was getting some of the teams ready in the parking lot, and there's a row of vehicles pulled up again, and I said, "Hey, guys, I need you to move your trucks. We've got deliveries coming today." So, it didn't go that well, the conversation, so I asked the police to come. I went and called, 'cause they also were parked the wrong direction on the street. I really only brought the police involved because I just wanted to make a point that, "Hey, we need to do something about this." So, my petition tonight to you guys would be in a humble spirit. If you look at the very back page of the council that provided it, it's kind of a shot aerial of the property. So, if you hold it up as we are, Manchester Street being here, and the hospital's new occupancy here, the yellow little silly lines up in on here are the current yellow curb markings where parking's not allowed. What I'm asking for, the change to be made, is where I'm proposing with orange lines on here, that we would make those curbs also a no parking area. You know, the hospital has added, and I'm grateful for the hospital... I'm gonna say it again. I mean, I'm thrilled that they're there, but I'm not thrilled that I can't get semis in and out of my lot to make deliveries on a, you know, on an unrestricted basis. I've even offered, if they really need close parking, the street that runs to the south of my property is technically in my legal description, and I share that with Jared Lenderick as shared access, because he accesses the property behind my business. So, that's a private area, and I've even offered to just mark them a spot on our street that they need to park close, that it can be for, you know, for maintenance vehicles, but just not in the road where it hampers our delivery of merchandise. So, I guess that's what I'm asking. I, you know, I think you've been very diligent and tried to be very professional. It just simply doesn't seem to be working, and it's now starting to become hardship. I do have drivers that are going to be passing us up for delivery when the street's parked full. You know, the hospital has added some additional traffic back there. We have a fair amount of traffic in and out. There's now... This is also the street or the path where it goes into the new drive-through pharmacy for the hospital. I mean, you know, heaven forbid there ever would be an emergency too. I mean, when there's... When trucks and service trucks are sitting out there with all the entrances and exits too, I do somewhat have a concern about emergency vehicle access back there as well if they need to, when there's stuff parked on the road. So, it's just a short section of Manchester Street, but I would like to have you guys consider making that into a parking area if we could.
So, Chris, it looks like there's about somewhere around 16 spots behind their building?
Yeah.
Are those full every day, like with employees?
So, they're not full in this picture.
Yeah.
That's kind of... So, that was just earlier this week. I took that picture. A lot of times, and they are full, I mean, and I think they reserve that for maybe the VIPs or doctors and people that work in there full-time, and I think maybe maintenance is maybe being asked to not park in those spots.
Right.
But, I don't know, it seems like there ought to be a reasonable way to do something, right?
And I guess that was my question is, couldn't they make two or three spots for maintenance vehicles if they're coming and going all the time?
And that would be my hope, and from what I've been told, that they won't do that. And I said, "Well, then, I'll be happy to make you a spot on our street." I mean, we park a lot of employees there every day, so I can't give them half of the street to park in, but if I could, I would be happy to make a spot for them. And the response was, "Well, that's private property. We're not gonna park there." It's like, well, I don't know else to do, so that's the reason I'm here tonight. I just want to do something.
And is there a rule, do they not let their maintenance park out in the parking lot out front?
My understanding is, when I ask that, that they request the maintenance people to not enter through the front customer entrance with tools and, you know, and materials for the purpose of not looking professional, so...
Have you got any response from the hospital, or just the maintenance guys?
That's what I was gonna ask, too. Have you talked to Scott Smith? You said you emailed him. I get hundreds of emails, and I'm not a CEO of a hospital. I can't imagine how many he gets. So... I'm sure, yeah. I mean, I, like many people, I mean, I have to sift through probably 200 emails a day myself, vendors and all kinds of things, so I've not had any response. There has been voice messages left, and there's been at least... Well, I have a copy of the one email, the initial one on March 17th, but there's been no follow-up.
And I hear you with more business thing, but I get it all the time. "There's nowhere to park. Monster Pizza's busy." Well, that's good, but that equals there's less places to park.
Right.
So... Do you see anyone else... I mean, does anyone else park on that street other than their vehicles?
No. Are there a parking rule for this type of recreation where it's business parking with a two-way street? Are you allowed to park there? Are you allowed to park?
Yes. I mean, you're...
Currently?
It's a non-provited area to park, and so long as cars are facing in the direction of traffic and closer than one foot or less to the curb, it's a permissible parking spot.
So, we could park... Essentially, we could park a car in both directions at the end of his driveway.
Yeah.
And then nobody get through.
I mean, you can't block the driveway.
Well, no, I meant the street.
The entrance to the street?
Entrance to the street. You wouldn't be going down the street if there are two cars. Well, you'd be one-way.
You'd be tighty. It'd be like high street.
It'd be like high street.
Mm-hmm.
I guess my question for Ann is, when we... When we make a no parking area, does that have to change an ordinance? I mean, does that... We have all of... Every single no parking area in the city, is that under ordinance, or how's that?
We have no parking zones, so those would be kind of our... But there is a schedule within Chapter 78 that would describe that, so it would require an amendment to our ordinances for that purpose.
Do these trucks there leave once or twice a day, or has it gotten better since I've been over?
Very random. So, earlier this week, this picture was taken, and the sort of half arrangement that we thought we had put together a week and a half or so ago after a meeting with the maintenance supervisor face-to-face out in the street, was that we asked them, you know, "Okay, fine. So, if we can't come up to some other resolution here, and you aren't willing to take me up on making you a private parking spot on our property to put your service vehicle, then can you at least park further enough, far enough down that a semi can jackknife himself back into the lot to make a delivery?" And he said, "Yeah, we..." He said, "We can do that," with apprehension, but he said he would do it. Well, the next morning, when I got to work, this is what it was, and they looked directly in front of the lot again.
And so, are the trucks back into your spot, into your lot? I mean, the semis?
The semis do, yeah. When, you know, when they can't back in, they just have to park out on Manchester Street, and then we have to, you know, cart the merchandise in. But, you know, I know we have a... We soon have a, you know, a, I don't know, a $10 order of speakers coming for the commercial project. So, driving that across the parking lot is not our favorite thing to do.
And I would say our goal is to not have delivery vehicles parking on city streets and unloading. If they have a place to go, we'd rather them go on a private property.
Right. So, I mean, here's a suggestion of something else to try. I'm all ears. I mean, I'm not here to make enemies or make frustration for anybody. We've tried to be diplomatic with our approach, but it just seems to be like that, where so it just is kind of...
Do you think that even just making the west side of the street there, maybe not both sides no parking, but just the west side, would that be...
Well, the east side's straight across from its entrance. That's where the semi can't get in, for sure.
Yeah, so typically, when a semi comes in, most of them, 'cause a lot of these people deliver to us, you know, bi-weekly, weekly, monthly, they... The truck drivers know us. I mean, it's many times the same carriers that come. They... A lot of the times, they'll come in and come around, and they'll pull forward towards the bridge church, and then they'll jackknife, and but when they come in to do that, they take up both lanes to make that swing, to, you know, to swing that semi into the lot. So, when there's anything parked on either side here, it inhibits their... So when there's anything parked on either side here, it inhibits their ability to make that sharp turn, so, so parking, you know, having it marked, you know, even if we don't wanna mark it so that it looks like we're just picking on the hospital, I mean, I'm not stupid, I mean, I get, we're trying to be responsible with the relationship here, 'cause we're both local businesses, right? I mean, I'm not looking to make trouble. If nothing else, mark the area directly in front of my drive down to this section here, no parking, leave them a couple spots where they can legally park a couple service vehicles if they insist on doing that. I mean, I don't know what else to do, I just need access to the lot.
Correct. I guess, you know, I, my point was, there's sixteen spots behind there, can't they make a couple of those for maintenance vehicles, and then?
There's sixteen spots behind it and about thirty in front.
That's my point, employees park out front.
And they have an arrangement, as I understand, with the bridge church, and a lot of the employees park on the south end of the bridge parking lot, with permission to do so, but there's quite a few, you know, employee cars that park there, which, fine, that doesn't make any difference to me, but.
'Cause I'm, sixteen employee spots behind is not even enough for all their employees, so I can see how they would have to use the bridge, I mean, 'cause it's pharmacy, stat care, behavioral health, like they're all out there, so that's, you can imagine how many.
And that's who's parked behind.
Customers coming in, so.
But like Ann said, if you look out front, there's a very big parking lot out there.
And I don't, I mean, when I have driven by there, I'm paying a little bit of attention to notice that that front parking lot is completely full all the time. And maybe you've had your eye on it more to know as well?
So, I mean, there's, there's typically, during a given business day, there are, you know, probably, I'm gonna say probably eight to ten cars in the front lot, most, you know, throughout the day at different times. I have never seen the lot full by any means, I mean, there's actually, I don't know how many spots are there, but there's, there's two double rows, double row, double row, and then there's another single row across the south end of the lot, there's, there's quite a few spaces there. I think ample parking, I mean, I get it, they don't, maybe one employee's entering that way, but they've also kind of arranged that with the bridge to have additional parking on the back of the building. You know, I was hoping that they could arrange for a maintenance parking position on the back of the building, maybe in spawn or something, or, you know, I asked the maintenance supervisor from the hospital if we were, I said, you know, I run, like I said, nine, you know, eight or nine vans cruise every day in field, and our company policy is to pull, needed to unload legally and safely, and then relocate the van to a approved parking spot for the duration of the time we're there. I mean, seems to be, you know, common practice in our trade to do such things. Yeah, it would be great and convenient, we could just park right next to the door and drag stuff in and out all day, but that doesn't usually work.
So Chris had called me the other day, and I said, talking to council is the best method, I don't know how you guys wanna do it, I made a fix.
I mean, I would not be opposed to going no parking, but I also feel like there's an opportunity to, um, make it easier. I know that you said you emailed Dr. Smith, you said you called him and left a voicemail, it surprises me that you haven't heard back from him, um, so, is there a way for the city to help?
Is it appropriate to ask Jeremy Gilbert, or, sorry, mayor?
Well.
From the city, to go talk to them about the situation first, before we change orders?
Or to assist in facilitating a conversation where something can be worked out.
I tell our employees where to park, and they park where we tell them to park, they could too, if, and they may have a good reason why they say they need to park there, but I'd like to hear that before we change orders, but.
I don't know.
Yeah, they want Chris to be able to get deliveries.
Yeah, there's, uh, there's twenty-six people that count on those deliveries arriving, so they have something to do every day, so, that, that needs to be, for thirty-one years, we've not had an issue being there.
I mean, we're talking with reasonable companies, our chambers, given large business of the year award, the small business of the year award, the.
I'm kind of, I'm, we are, to be honest with you.
No, I agree.
Right, right. And I think, it just seems like the message hasn't gotten to the right person.
Yeah.
That's what it seems like, so, however you guys wanna act, I mean, make a no parking area, that's your call, or if you want?
I'd be a little tired to try to track him down and talk to him.
You want to, you, you can.
I don't care.
I know, I would too, I mean, I don't care.
Well, first, and get a response, and I get.
Well, I would like to show him your proposal, like you, we will make all of this no parking, we can just move these trucks, we can make half of it no parking, give them a spot.
I'll make them a spot on the end of my street.
Yeah, make your spot, let me mark that.
Right, even if that was no parking in front of your drive, and if you have to wait for one vehicle, you know, that truck's still gonna be able to get in there, I mean, as long as he's not parking out in front of the drive, the truck can get in.
The only reason I'm, my proposal shows parking to be prohibited on both sides in orange, is because the demeanor of a couple of the technicians, after friendly attempts to ask them to move, is, I know what will happen, we'll make one side of the street no parking, and they'll just move to the other, that's, that's the mentality I'm dealing with here.
If they're over there, you need to have a semi pull through there.
And if there's a lot of increased traffic there, even because you said like the drive-through pharmacy and just.
Right, right.
One side probably wouldn't be enough, so.
So I'm perfectly, if, if, I agree, if we can do a diplomatic approach to this and it works, hey, I'm all in favor, I'm just looking for some help, obviously, we have failed since, well, the, the email states in the email copy that for roughly thirty days, we have been talking with their drivers and their people and their receptionists asking for the new vehicles, to no avail, so on March twenty-seventh is when the email's dated, is what it says, it's just, it's not made any change.
So late, middle to late February.
Right.
So, is that what you guys wanna do? I mean, somebody?
I'm okay if Scott wants to go for it.
Great.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, thank you.
I do. Okay. Anything else?
I do not.
Anything else?
Uh, no.
Okay, I will go to department head. Kevin Gerber. Watch him, thank you.
We're gonna have, uh, open houses to be on August third. I believe I, I believe it's gonna be nine to noon. I believe it's nineteen, is what we're doing, so we'll have the whole police department open, manage all the squad cars out, and the public can come in, and check out the police department, Jeff Mann has been inspired me with the open houses of the fire department, and, oh, remember that police department doing that, so. We'll be, uh, touch a truck the same day at the same time, try to have a car that keeps.
Uh, when do the kids go back to school, you know, does anybody know? Oh, it's, that's right, before school goes back?
Yeah.
Okay. Jeff, since you're such an inspiration, do you have anything?
No. Uh, yeah, we, excuse me, finished up our schools out, opened out last Friday, and we had approximately a hundred and fifty-one people, kids, parents, grandparents come through, and had a lot of good questions, maybe have some junior firefighters that weren't, and you and I, for maybe get older, so.
Great.
Cool. All right. Kurt? Aaron? Bill? Amy?
Uh, Ken Grant, name's Erwin, she, her last weekend comes in July twenty-third, and so I guess, do I need to ask permission to start the application?
Really? Yeah.
July what?
July twenty-second, that week will be the last week.
So we will be looking for a director of time, so I think, basically just asking permission to go ahead and start the application process, to post it. Your motion?
I'd make the motion.
Motion second, on paper?
Aye.
Pardon, same sign, okay.
And then also with the Fourth of July holiday, try to pick up that is normal on Thursday, we'll pick up Friday, and on Friday is normal round.
Okay, so the only change is Thursday's picked up Friday?
Yep.
Okay. Josh? Okay, Carrie?
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Ian? Counsel? Okay, um, just, I hope that everyone has a safe, uh, Fourth of July holiday week, weekend, enjoy the holiday and be safe out there. Anything from public? Mr. Becker? Okay. Could you get your, could you get your sign yet? Did you get your sign yet on your street?
No.
Okay.
We got Tom from a while back, a developer wanted the property over one, uh, west of the, who's the, the fire department, have three.
Oh, there's been a couple people ask about it.
I hope it stays green.
Hope it stays green? Okay. Thank you for your, for your input. We will check on that sign too, you're supposed to have a children at play sign or something. Okay. Anything else from public media?
Okay, motion pay the claims.
Motion second, on paper?
Aye.
Pardon, same sign?
And a motion to adjourn?
Okay. Motion second, on paper?
Aye.
Pardon, same sign?